Okay, Chair, the floor is yours.
Hey, well, thank you. Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. Today is November 4th, 2020, and this is being held through a Zoom conference. We have, all of our commissioners are present, so we have a quorum, so I'll call the meeting to order. Do, do any of the commissioners have announcements that they would like to make? Okay, so this time, this time we'll open up public comment for items that are not on the agenda or items that are on the consent calendar. Scott, do you have the, the tag for the?
Yeah, just give me a second here, I'm trying to open it.
Okay. And you can access the public comment through the, either, with the numbers that will be showing up on your screen. Okay, it's up. Zeke, do we have anybody who is interested in speaking?
Mr. Chair, we have one person in queue, but nobody with their hands raised.
Okay, so if that person wants to speak to public comment, raise your hand, or we will move on. Okay, closing public comment, we'll move on to items A1 and A2, this is the consent calendar, the current advanced planning processing list, and approval of minutes from the meeting of August 18th. Do we have any items or changes or discussions on these items?
I just had a couple of questions about some of the things on the project list.
Okay, let's, we'll, we'll pull that right now, go ahead and have that discussion.
Let me see if I can get the right numbers here, I'm gonna get my screen wider. Scott, it looks like number 6 and number 11 are talking about modifications to rooftop telecommunications things, and I was just wondering, at what point do those have to come back to us because they're, they're, they're visual issues? And I'm not sure they're affecting, you know, height requirements, and do we, do we typically consider things like that within the zoning envelope?
Yeah, so they're, they are, you see them as major modifications, major modifications come back to planning commission for review, so you'll be seeing them. Just not teed up yet.
Okay, that's all I have, thanks.
Okay, any other items? Okay, then do we have a, do we have a motion? To approve these items?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, could, Scott, could you call the, the vote on that?
Sure, Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Graffia?
Aye.
Commissioner Barone? Chair Lor?
Uh, yes.
Motion passes 5-0, thank you.
All right, great. Next item is B1, it's case number CDP 20-008 and CUP 20-04, and this is, site location is 475 Radcliffe, and this is additional use permit for wireless communication facility. Do we have any ex parte communication on this from anybody? Okay, seeing none. Cindy, do you have a, you got that PowerPoint powered up?
I do, I'm, I'm ready to share my screen here, let's try this.
Okay, great.
It is... Okay, can you see it?
Yep.
Okay, so this is an application for coastal development permit and conditional use permit. On the screen is the site location of the proposed facility at 475 Radcliffe. It is just east of Little Morro Creek Road and north of Radcliffe Avenue. See how I changed pages here, oh, there we go. Here is an aerial image of the existing lattice towers that are located here, the PG&E lattice towers, and it is located just north, sorry, it's the northernmost one in this picture. The zoning is RAPD, it's a planned development overlay. The application is an application by AT&amp;T, and it is request to allow installation of six panel antennas and associated equipment on an existing 73-foot PG&E lattice tower. The project also includes a new 20-by-15-foot equipment enclosure enclosed by an eight-foot tall CMU wall and double chain link gate placed approximately 35 feet northeast of the lattice tower. The access to the shelter would be via the existing dirt road off of Radcliffe. The zoning ordinance allows antennas and public utility facilities in any zone district subject to obtaining a conditional use permit, and thus the application before the planning commission tonight. On this slide, you are seeing the boundary side plan, and the highlighted yellow areas depicts the proposed AT&amp;T base area and the existing tower location. Here's a zoomed in that shows the proposed AT&amp;T underground power run, and then in a large site plan. The project plans show the specific telecom facility additions would include installation of six panel antennas, 15 remote radio units, surge compressors, and the associated equipment in that enclosure. The underground power run includes a three-foot wide trench west of the equipment enclosure and a separate underground power fiber run from the enclosure to the tower. As stated, the project is also requesting to construct a 20-by-15-foot equipment enclosure, and here's a site plan of what that looks like. This is shown on your project plans, Plan Sheet C1. The equipment enclosure would house the backup power generator, power plant, battery equipment, and other equipment. The applicant is proposing eight-foot CMU wall where six and a half feet would be the standard requirement as allowed by our zoning ordinance, so they are requesting an increase from six and a half to eight feet. This is an image of the project plans elevations, and this is one of the elevations that depicts that from the south elevation, looking north, looking northward from Radcliffe Avenue. The applicant submitted visual simulations, and staff reviewed the project for impacts to visual aesthetics. This is an, this is the proposed image that shows, I'm hoping that you can see my cursor moving around here on the screen, but in this picture, the text box is pointing to the proposed panel antennas. And in this picture, you can see the panel antennas along with the screened equipment, equipment enclosure. This image is looking from, looking northward from Radcliffe, and in the background, you see the equipment enclosure and the panel antennas. Regarding the project specifics, due to the proposed mounting locations, the AT&amp;T antennas would, of course, not be accessible to the general public. The city did receive an RF report, and that was prepared to evaluate the hazards and RF emissions that was determined to be in compliance with FCC requirements. As explained in the RF report, the antennas are mounted above ground level because of the short wavelength of the personal communication services, and the purpose of the application is to improve service in the area and expand the LTE coverage. Planning commission, or, excuse me, a planning staff has recommended Planning Condition 4, which would require that recommended signage would be incorporated as recommended by the hazards report. And Planning Commission, Planning Condition 3 would require that the antennas be painted a non-reflective gray to blend in with the existing tower in response to the visual simulations. As well, Planning Condition 5 is recommended that would require drought-tolerant landscaping to be added to screen the street-facing sides of the equipment enclosure so as to mitigate the impact of the CMU wall. And lastly, the applicant's proposal of the eight-foot to screen the ground-located mechanical equipment can be approved by the planning commission if it is found that characteristics particular to the property would render screening ineffective. The request for extra height is only the minimum amount needed to screen the generator power equipment. Planning Condition 6 is added to your resolution, which recommends that the chain link fencing on the gate side be modified to include brown slats for improved screening. And with that, staff's recommendation is for conditional approval of the project by adopting Planning Commission Resolution 1620, which includes the findings and conditions of approval for CDP 20-008 and CUP 20-004. With that, I'm available to answer any questions, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Cindy. Do we have questions for, for staff, Michael?
Yes, Cindy, the, the biggest question I have is the difference between what I see on the plans that they've got shown as the elevation of these versus what's in the visual simulation. They don't seem to match very much. I don't know if you've got that, if you can go backwards in your presentation.
I see this, this simulation's more than, more high.
Yeah, look at that, and in the, roughly, or, or that one especially, even higher than that. If you look at the cool draw, the side, elevation of it, they're down, it's, 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 it's two years to them than a kind of a single layer, like with the visual simulation. So I wasn't sure which one we were supposed to be looking at as the more accurate one. It's one of the technical drawings where they've got the, the side of the enclosure out of the CMU, and then they've got the, the, I think it's the one right before that.
Before this?
Yeah, in my, in the packet at least, it's right there, that one. See, all those are, they're about below the halfway point, and there's, there's two distinct levels of them on the tower, and then if you look at the visual simulation, there's one level, go to the next one, dancing forward, there's one level of them, and they're up higher. So I wasn't sure which one we were really looking at. I mean, my biggest concern, which we're not supposed to acknowledge, is that that's our bike park there for the kids. And so the lower these things are, it strikes me, they don't get the coverage that they want. So I'm thinking the visual simulation, where they're up higher, seemingly up higher, is more accurate, but then if there's two layers of these things, there's a lot more stuff up there than I think I'm seeing in the visual simulation. So that's my only concern, is it is a visual impact of these things. And honestly, that, well, I can ask you this question too. Did you go up to the top of that neighborhood adjacent to it and look down into that, that zone to see if the eight-foot would really cover the equipment or the people on the uphill side of that adjacent neighborhood to the south? Are they gonna be looking down into the equipment?
So I did get measurements from the applicant to find out the height of the equipment that they're requesting to screen, as well as, you know, the, the concrete base, and it's, it's at the eight-foot. I think one of the power cabinets might be two inches above that eight-foot height. I've been at the top of, of Radcliffe and have looked, so definitely familiar with this, with this area here.
Yeah, I would say, no, man, that's, that's all the questions I have at this point.
Okay, okay.
Okay, anybody else wish to, I can't see your hands, so go ahead and speak up when she's got the screen.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Would it be possible, Cindy, for them to stucco that CMU into a, more, to soften it into that hillside, maybe like a green or a neutral brown to kind of make it seem more camouflaged?
I think it's possible, it might be a question for the applicant. We didn't recommend any changes to make it green, just because most of the time of the year, it's brown and we don't, we get much water. But thus, that's the plan, that's why we recommended the conditional approval to add the drought-tolerant landscaping, so at least it could build up around the wall. And certainly, the planning commission could condition it as a state that.
Thank you.
Chair, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead, please.
What's, what's the reason for one of the sides being of fencing material as opposed to your block material? I was just curious about that.
Oh, that's the gate, so that the maintenance personnel can access the equipment inside.
Oh, okay, so it's just a gate, it's not?
Yeah, yeah, the facility at the top of Radcliffe has a similar setup, it's just so that they can access that.
And do, do we need anything explicit in, in this permit? In the odds situation where the, all the landscaping dies, or is that simply implied? That if, if the landscaping dies, they have to replace it in a timely fashion?
So the condition says that they would be required to submit drought-tolerant landscaping, and I think it might even say to the satisfaction of Community Development Director. We'd be looking at that at the building permit stage, and certainly if it dies, I mean, then that would be a non-compliance issue with the permit, but hopefully the, the drought tolerant takes care of that and it maintains itself.
But if it, if it died some years from now, they would still be on the hook to come back and replace it?
Right.
That was it?
Okay.
Okay, and then on the landscaping on that, Cindy, are they gonna, are they required to do natives as, as the adjacent plants? Or are they going to put in flame trees or something?
So it's subject to Director approval. The intention would be that it be compatible and consistent with the surrounding landscaping, I mean, that's all, you know, that, that, the condition language was that it be drought tolerant and, you know, so that blends in with the visual screening. We certainly would want something that looks out of place and looks noticeable.
Well, maybe, should we condition it as native, native and drought tolerant?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Okay, so let's open this up for public comment. Would the applicant wish to speak to this item?
Kathy Novak is in the queue, can I move her over to the?
She's not the applicant.
Is the applicant available, or?
I don't see anybody else in the queue.
Okay, well, if, 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 yeah.
Yeah, they, they told me that they were going to be attending, so I'm not sure if they had difficulty accessing the meeting, or maybe it's, it's a miss, but I expected them to be on the call.
Okay, well, we'll open it up for public comment, and if they show up by the time we... Zeke, if anybody has their hands raised, then let's, let's, we can go ahead and hear from them.
Chair Lor, at this time, nobody has their hand raised.
Okay, it's too bad that the applicant isn't here, because I've got a couple of questions for him. So we'll close public comment, bring it back to the planning commission then. So Cindy, I guess you're gonna be the, the point of information here. Do you have any idea why they're doing LTE and not 5G compatible with this?
That is a very good question. I do not know specifically, other that their coverage maps showed a gap in this area, and that's included as one of the attachments to the staff report.
And at this point, my understanding is they're not yet deploying 5G to our area.
So they're gonna come back with a different antenna system for the 5G?
Uh, would be my guess.
Because it's different wavelengths and stuff?
Correct.
Okay.
They'll just replace the ones that they have here.
Yeah. Do you know, Cindy or Scott, do you know if this will get any coverage up Highway 41? Or how is their, how is their coverage up 41?
I can quickly look here on the, on the attachment here.
I think in the staff report, it looks like it's mostly hitting the north side of town and out toward the high school and down the west end of 41. I don't think it's hitting into the corridor at all, I think it's too, too screen.
Too far north.
Yeah.
Okay, those are my questions, anybody else have any questions, or? Okay, Jesse?
Is that access road already there?
Yes.
So like?
Okay. So any, any discussion or further comments? Okay, Jesse?
I do have comments. I can unmute here. Yeah, I think it would be, you know, in our interest to try and camouflage that, that enclosure as much as we can. If not, stucco maybe just a, a neutral block color.
Like a split face block, maybe?
Say that again?
Like a split face block?
Yeah, yeah, something maybe.
It has depth and texture to it, and then it's also, we'd have it be beige or brown to match the hillside.
Yeah.
And they should agree on whatever, that's like, you know, two months out of the year.
Yeah, I mean, those, nothing you can do with those, with those antennas, that they're gonna be ugly and, you know, that's just, that's just that. But, you know, whatever we can do with that enclosure, I think we should try.
And then they, also they have the, the sliding to be consistent color with the block.
Yeah, as reasonably, as much as they can, I mean, just try to camouflage it, try to make it, you know, blend into that hillside as much as we can, I think would be ideal, unless we could do something, you know, to beautify it and, you know, put a big MB on the side of it, we know it's a high school color or something, but, you know, I don't know if that's on the table.
I think the MB is just north of this, isn't it?
What about the zip line down to the bicycle park?
I don't know if I want to push mine, I think I'll just ask for beige.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, Michael?
Yeah, I, I have a feeling this one's gonna end up like the one that was on the south end of Quintana, where they didn't even finish the inside of it, and when you're driving down Scenic Route 1, you look down and you see the equipment and the unfinished walls inside. So I think from, from Radcliffe and that, that neighborhood to the south, this is only halfway up the hill, and those houses are considerably higher than eight feet above this thing. So I think from the upper parts of that hill, when they look down or to the north, they're actually gonna be looking into the, the little enclave there, and I'm not sure there's much you can do about it. I'm not sure much you can do about it at all, we're not, we're not really allowed to not approve these things, is my understanding. But it sure is an eyesore, I mean, we're going through the general plan, and we talk about Scenic Route 1 and things like that, and here we're loading this thing up with more techno garbage, and I think it's just an eyesore. Yeah, we can color it any way we want, it's gonna be an eyesore.
We could also have them put a roof on it. Yeah, interesting.
I'm, I'm talking about the, the telecommunications stuff on the tower. It's huge. I mean, if, if the visual simulation is the attractive, attractive one, the other one is, is really ghastly, and I don't, I don't know which one it is, because they don't agree, and maybe we'll, we'll get even more on it when the 5G comes in, I don't know. It's kind of whatever they want to do, because we're at their mercy, I guess.
The whole thing is pretty ghastly. I mean, you look at the picture with all those wires everywhere and the towers, there's nothing aesthetically pleasing about that corridor.
No, and that's the, that's from the PG&E. It's the PG&E switchyard, there's nothing we can, we can really do about that. I mean, that's, that's there forever, and they just put some of those towers in, so.
So Michael, are you concerned that the, like on Quintana there, that you're going to be able to see the visuals from above in that enclosure, mechanical, you know, the mechanical enclosure there, the room?
Yeah, and I'm not sure that's necessarily a bad thing, you know, I think if it's the, if it's the, you know, you know, rough face block that maintains its color, you don't have to go back and repaint it or things like that, and the fence has some kind of reasonable capacity to maintain itself without looking like the Route 1 Caltrans fence. You know, it'll just look like another industrial piece on the hillside. Nobody from the neighborhood is concerned about it, they probably get better coverage from this. They may not be upset about it at all. It's just, it's more frustration than anything else, with the general plan stuff.
Yeah, but I don't even think that you can see, you'll be able to see the equipment. On Google Earth, on the street view up on Radcliffe, and, and you're, there's like a little sort of, the hill kind of rolls over and down, when you get, when you get to this antenna, I don't think you'll be able to see it. It is kind of like it shows in the, uh, in the simulation they have on, oh, the last page. Yeah, I don't know, this one?
See it?
Over there. So when you're looking at it from Radcliffe, which I'm sitting on the street view, it's kind of over a little hump on the hill, so I don't know that you can even see it from up there. You'll be able to see antennas, of course. Again, you have big, big power line coming corridor lattice structures, I'm not really sure that it makes it worse.
Okay, do we have any suggestions or a motion, or?
Ready to make a motion if we're done talking?
Okay, I think we are.
All right, let me get back to it. Sorry, I gotta scroll, let's go. Chair, I move that the planning commission approves CDP 20-008, CUP 20-04, approval of a coastal development permit, CDP 20-008, establishment of a wireless telecommunications facility with antennas on an existing PG&E tower. The request includes outdoor equipment enclosure surrounded by eight-foot CMU wall to be split-faced and to try and blend into the surroundings as to the discretion of the Community Development Director to screen associated wireless equipment and generator where six and a half feet is the maximum height.
Okay, do you want to add the addition of native to the landscaping conditions?
Sure.
Okay, and we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Okay, then let's call the vote, here, Scott, if you would.
I'll let Cindy do that, it's her project.
Okay, Cindy, thanks.
Commissioner Barone?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Graffia? Chairperson Lor?
Uh, yes.
Okay, that was 4-1, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item is, item number B2, is the Plan Morro Bay, General Plan Local Coastal Plan Update. This is a continued hearing from October 20th, and we're to review the local coastal, General Plan Local Coastal Program Update and give our recommendations. So do we have a staff report on this, Scott, or Cindy? Or do we want to jump right into it?
I mean, I guess we, I mean, I guess what we did put in the staff report, in that the, the planning commission at the last meeting requested some comparison related to FAR, and we got a couple of FAR comparisons, and it's in the staff report, I mean, you can take a look at it, related to... I mean, you can take a look at it, um, related to, uh, City of Slow and, and City of Tascadaro. We don't match up on all of the four area ratios. Uh, I think the first one that you come to was, uh, community commercial, where we were 1.25 with the allowance for, you know, mixed use in that location and between 15 and 27 units per acre. On top of that, um, not included in the, in the FAR. And then Slow had the FAR in that similar zone of three, 3.0, as did Atascadero. Our district commercial FAR was 0.5. Slow was 2.0, Atascadero was 0.4. Neighborhood commercial, we were at 1.0, again, with that allowance for the additional residential that doesn't count towards the FAR. And Slow, it was 2.0, Atascadero was 0.3. So we were in the middle there. In the visitor serving commercial area, we were 1.25. Slow is 2.5, Atascadero was 0.3, so again, in the middle. What was the next one that we had? General light industrial, we were at 0.5. Slow is at 1.5, Atascadero is at 0.4. Mixed use, we were at 1.0. Slow didn't have that. We were at 1.0 again with that residential density as well. And then Atascadero was 0.3, so we were more than that. Public institutional, we're at 0.5. Slow is at 2.0, Atascadero is at 0.4, so again, in the middle. And I think that was the last comparison that we had with the others had as well.
Okay.
So I'll just provide that additional information. Certainly we can talk more about it if you want or not. I do recommend that we, that we open a public comment again this evening. I think that's why Carrie Novak is in queue. She did provide us, sort of this afternoon, an update to the waterfront folks letter that they received last time. And I think this one now includes some solutions that they, they'd offer to the questions and concerns that they have. I don't recommend that we go through those today. I think we should continue going through Plan Moro Bay. Obviously, you just got that information as well, so you probably need a little time to digest it. My recommendation on that would be to pick that up again at our meeting on the 17th. We'll probably have more time to weigh into it. It'll give you a little time to take a look at it. I, we also got some correspondence from Betty Winholtz today. I think most of you probably saw it. She's concerned that we didn't take public comment last time, but then I showed her where it was at. She agreed that, no, we didn't do it. And she made one good recommendation, I thought, as it related to taking public comment. And maybe we should do it element by element. I don't know that it becomes that much of an issue at this point since we have one person in the queue. But it was a thought as far as, you know, we take it, taking public comment after each element as we come to it.
Okay.
Gary, I don't know if there's a good time to interrupt here, but just real quick before I forget to mention it, I don't know if we need to declare the ex parte communication we had with the, the executive committee for the Embarcadero lease, master lease holders. I did meet with them last week and I just wanted to make sure it was spoken to.
Now's a good time. I, I also met with them. Has anybody else met with them?
Me too.
Okay, full disclosure. And I think we need to get a little more discussion on this FAR, but I think, Scott, I think I'll do it in private and then, or come talk to you and then we'll, we'll discuss it, we'll discuss it at the next meeting.
I'd be happy to, to, you know, take, you know, sit down with you, go over it and then, you know, have a, have some, you know, discussion point for our next meeting to go over that along with the issues that were raised by our Embarcadero master lease holder folks. So I definitely want to weigh in and get their input.
Scott, did we? Did, did we have any visuals from when we were looking at the, the downtown plan about the, the taller buildings? Did we have any visuals about that that reflect that F A R and the way it works out downtown in some of these other areas? You know, the numbers are really abstract till you see kind of the, the lot coverage versus F A R kind of outcomes.
Yeah, we, we, we do. And the one thing I was, you know, in those areas where you, we do allow the additional residential, though that, that residential square foot, it doesn't count towards the FAR. So it's just as it relates to the commercial component of it and then the FAR, it, it doesn't go into the residential because we have the density requirement that we apply to it instead. And as the commissioner recalls, you know, the discussion with we need housing. So we just opened it up and said, put as many as you can there, you know? And that's why it's at the higher density limit that you see for our high density residential areas of about 15 to 27 units per acre.
So Scott, I guess, since we are discussing a little bit, I'll just bring up my point for one of the, one of the points. Well, I don't understand why we need the FAR, you know, especially if we have setbacks, lot coverage requirements and, you know.
Stay law, we don't have to, we have to do it.
Okay, okay, just.
It's a change in general plan law, actually. I think I mentioned this last time, but, you know, when our last general plan was adopted, it wasn't a requirement. So you don't see FAR in there. But in the intervening years, which have been many, the, the law changed. And so the requirement is that we have that in there and so that's why it's there.
Okay, it seems like, you know, to me, it's, it can be better controlled through the zones, through even airspace setbacks, rather than, so that you can, so we could actually control where, where we want it. We also have, you know, my point of contention with, with, with it is the most efficient way to build for both resources and energy and, and usage is to, is to stack. So you have minimal foundation work, you have minimal roofing and you have most enclosed space for the amount of materials used, you know, for both embodied energy and also continually energy usage. So, so it seems like these FAR ratios are once again, are, are going in conflict of how we're trying to, to maximize the use of energy, you know, for, for development and continual use. So that's kind of where, you know, one of, one of the things I'm, I'm coming from. And we can discuss this later, but I just wanted to mention that. So, um, so at this point, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. And, um, does, do we have anybody who would like to speak to this item?
Chair Lor, there is nobody with their hand raised at this moment?
Is Kathy Novak still on the?
Yes, she is.
Okay, let's give her a chance to, to, to speak up on this, I think.
I'll ask her, or allow her to talk and she can speak if she wants. Kathy, you're online if you want to speak to this issue.
Okay, I'm still, Kathy, you're still muted if.
I guess she doesn't want to speak.
Okay. We'll, so we'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission and move on with the, going through this, we'll. So at this, so where we left off, I believe, was on 3F 121 and it was the 3F noise. Ready to get situated here? Got two plans and five different correction sheets, so it's shuffling this around. So, so going from 3-121 forward, do we have anybody on the next few pages? Anybody wish to have any items that they wish to discuss on this?
At the top of 120, or 3122, it says pursuits and wildlife. And so the sentence ends, how noise affects, adversely affects the enjoyment of recreational pursuits and wildlife. And I think what that means, it's not how it impacts wildlife. I think we should be thinking about how our noise impacts wildlife in the area as well. We could have parts of the downtown on the Embarcadero where we're, we're impacting the seals and things like that, that they, they decide they don't want to be here anymore or. So and I would just add impacts in front of wildlife for that sentence.
Unless the wildlife and the partying.
That's a different wildlife.
Different wildlife.
I would agree with that, Michael. I think one of the really interesting things that happened when we first shut down with the pandemic was the increase in bird song and, and all wildlife activity. I saw more lizards, I saw more, you know, critters came out and we're very happy with the quiet, which related to less traffic noise, you know, for one thing. But I would very much support that addition.
Okay, I would too. And then, so how, how will that affect, you know, Fourth of July firework planning and stuff? It seems like that would pretty much negate any opportunity to do, to do fireworks in the future. And I'm not pro or con on either, I just want to bring that point up.
You know, that, that has to come for a special permit anyhow, doesn't it? So maybe then we would discuss it.
And typically how we do it, because we, at least in the more recent years, done it over the water, requires a coastal development permission by the coastal commission.
Because we also did it for Harbor Fest, well, had in the past, I should say.
I think there will be events where there are going to be more noise. But to me, this is more suggesting, you know, do you put in a factory that has constant fans going on the roof or something like that? You know, is that a negative impact on the, the noise and the wildlife? But.
Okay.
That would be my interpretation.
Okay, so 3122, measuring noise and vibration, 3123.
I've got one at the end of, on 3124.
Okay, well, it's gone down.
Let me get it back on here. Oh, I touched something and it's nowhere close where it's supposed to be. There it is, okay, it's getting close, there we are. The, that second paragraph, I was wondering if something like adding a sentence, due to Moro Bay's hillside topography, some hillsides create localized conditions where downhill or uphill sound travels farther than when degraded or quieted in a flat horizontal relationship. It's not unusual for hillsides to hear sounds of surf, the sport events at the high school or the bark of harbor seals. Because it sounds like in the pictures, the, the graphics, it seems like all the noise is based around thinking about the highway and everything seems to dissipate. And I, I bet I hear, and perhaps Commissioner Lor does too, or some of the others, I hear the highway noise where we are pretty substantially.
Yes.
Truck, especially the trucks with their air brakes and things like that that come through or the. So I, I, I just wanted to make sure that it didn't seem like, oh, you're 50 feet away. There can't be any sound problems and it's, we have a shape issue here too.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. The sound carries up the hill considerably, especially in certain still, hill or slightly, you know, you know, low, low velocity airflow, you know, we can hear seals out on the, out on the, you know, number three buoy out there. So not to mention every play that's of, of the high school football games.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not missing the high school football at night.
Yeah. Or their lights.
No, I'm not missing the lights.
So I, I, I agree with it. It'd be nice to have it in here. I don't know if it's, what we do about it.
What this is kind of getting at is, is really taking a look at noise impacts related to new development and, and more particular to single family homes that are adjacent to the noise source. So you might be hearing them up the hill, but, you know, with current installation requirements and housing and stuff, you know, with windows closed and that type of thing, you're probably not hearing it inside your house. You might be hearing it on, which is probably what you experienced, you have decks on your house that face the noise source. And if you actually have a cupboard while on the front that faces the noise source, the noise on, on those types of deck can be pretty intense when you're, when you're uphill. So that's a, as it relates to that type of like outdoor thing is probably, you know, pertinent. I'm not so sure, you know, this is really getting, I think, more along the lines of, you know, related to development that's adjacent to the noise source and interior noise issues.
And my, my only concern is that people come here and they look at this document and, and they, they treat it the same way they do some flatland place. And they don't understand that, you know, the, you can go from hillside to hillside pretty easily with, with sound. It just puts one more flag up there to say, you know, there may be an issue here you've got to watch.
Well, it's also, it's also an issue on the Embarcadero when you have the residences up, up on the bluff. You have several of the restaurants there will, will have amplified tickets. Would be, you know, saying which, you know, ticket number 34, it's ready. And you can hear it, hear it plainly up and down, you know, in the residential area, 200, 300, you know, feet away. You know, so probably better than you can hear it right there. So I don't, I don't have a problem with inserting it somewhere in this document.
Chair Lor?
Yeah.
Can I, I just wanted to interrupt for a second and let you know that Kathy Novak just phoned me to let me know or to pass along to the commission that she was trying to speak at public comment. She, she wasn't expecting to talk tonight. She thought she was going to talk on the 17th, so she wasn't sure. Technical difficulties, but if she should dial back, if the commission wants her to, if the commission wants to reopen public comment and wants her to call in, she, she can speak for the public comment, but she just wasn't sure if she should or just not, you know, tour things tonight. She can always talk on the 17th.
Right, well, let's go, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. We can, let's finish this item, you know, she can get on, have her come online. So do we have, do we have anybody else that's, that's inserting this language in the, in the document? We kind of need three people, so it's Michael and I and.
Well, I, I would support it. I, I certainly find nothing objectionable about it, no.
Michael, would you email that to me?
Okay.
I would also note that in the queue is the applicant for the previous project, assuming that, that he's listening. The planning commission approved the project.
So if he wants us to.
And then, you know, I mean, I mean, he should be happy it's approved, so.
Okay, well, let's, let's, if Kathy wishes to have, to say anything, let's go ahead and open up public comment for that item. And then we'll see if the applicant has, uh, has anything to say or anything they wish to say about the previous item. So we're going to be kind of loose with rules around here with technology here.
And Kathy did tell me that it might take her a minute to dial in, although I see that she's one of the attendees here, so.
Okay, well, let's, if she's not ready to speak, then whenever she's available. So Cindy or Scott, could you talk to the applicant and see if they wish to or wouldn't to speak to their previous item or they just want to accept the results?
Yeah.
I mean, they're not raising their hand or anything, so maybe they're fine. I, it's kind of hard to tell. I guess we could just allow them to talk and see if they have something to say.
Okay, let's open it up for them. So Z, can you?
Yes, I'll allow them to talk and, uh, there you go. And they just have to unmute themselves, there you go.
Hello?
Hey, hi.
Yeah, this is John Papas.
Okay, John, we approved your, we approved your item. Is there anything that you would like to address the commission on?
No, except.
Okay.
I just sincerely apologize.
No, that's fine, I know how this goes. All right, we'll close that item and then as soon as Kathy's available, let's. Okay, so, so let's, let's move on. And then when she's available, she can, we'll just open up public comment again to, to let her, let her speak. So, um, so moving on to vibrations, that's 3120, 125. Next page, 3-126. And, um, I've got an item on that. I've got an item on that and just, you know, to see if we need on the stationary and construction noise sources along with the list of sources, just maybe amplified voice and music. Put in that list of sources. I'm sorry, what page are you on, Chair Lour? Three, one twenty-five, I believe.
Three, one twenty-five?
Three, one twenty-six.
Yeah, it's hard for me to read the-
Three, one twenty-six.
Yeah, under stationary and construction noise sources, there's a list of heating, ventilation, and air conditioning units, automotive repair shops, parking lots, school functions, high school sporting events. Just amplified voice and indoor music. Just into that list.
Okay, so what was that again? I'm sorry, I was trying to get my notes back up. I apologize.
No, just, just insert into that list amplified voice and music, poor music. Or amplified voice, uh, my amplified music, by the way. Okay, then three dash one twenty-seven, noise sensitive land uses. And then three dash one twenty-eight.
I just question on the chart that's there. So when we talk about residential, is that where the vacation rentals come in? They're residential, since they're a residential zone, they're not treated as transient lodging that has a higher unacceptable?
No, they're treated as residential.
Okay, thanks.
Can we talk about trash trucks?
Especially on the Embarcadero, but hotels.
Especially outside my window on Tuesday morning.
Right, right. When are we going to get our electric trash trucks? It'll be a lot less noisy.
Well, they'll probably still be noisy.
Then also, you know, I have a note here on something, you know, I'm not sure where to put it, Scott. Cindy, it says, do we talk about time of noise? And this is talking about the trash trucks and also the, you know, where, when the noise is, you know, is you know, is created?
It's down there on the bottom of three dash one twenty-nine. Because I had a, it has maximum allowable exterior noris exposure. And it's got daytime seven till ten PM. Now, I was just wondering, is the ten PM something we talked about a long time ago? That seems to be awfully late to have.
I mean, it was, this hasn't changed from the last time you saw.
The zoning ordinance says something about set up to sundown, if I recall correctly.
So, no, I don't think we have anything that's like that. I think it's seven AM to seven PM in some areas.
Yeah, it's, construction is seven PM.
Yeah, but farther noises it is as well, in the noise nuisance section.
Because the maximum level up there at sixty-five at ten PM is, I don't know, maybe I'm just feeling old tonight.
At decimal level at sixty is you and I having a conversation.
Chair Lour, when you have a break in the conversation, the caller that has their hand up, the eight oh five number, that is Kathy Novak, by the way, just wanted to-
Okay, well, let's go ahead and let, we'll open public comment and let her speak.
All right, Ms. Novak, you are on the line. Just have to unmute yourself.
I think she's calling from her landline.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let me try again.
She did say, she did say she'd be prepared for the next meeting.
Okay.
Technical glitches here with, with the technology.
Okay, sorry Kathy.
Okay. Do herself. I mean, we'll make sure we get her squared away so she can talk next time, especially since it has the item for the Embarcadero down there.
Yeah, we'll devote more time to that.
We'll put her to make sure she can, she can get on.
Okay. All right, so what about the time period? Do we want to leave that at ten PM? What's the consensus on that?
Seen a reason to change it at this point.
Okay. All right. So three, one thirty. And then the community noise surveys and the noise contours.
Is this a good place for Michael's comments to go in?
That, that might be a good spot for it on the noise contours. Kind of a disclaimer to the map. I think that's a good idea, Susan. Michael, do you agree?
Yeah, I think that's fine. I just took it in order where it appeared, but that would be fine, as long as it's in there somewhere.
Okay, okay. Is that good, Scott?
Yeah, I'm going to make, I'm making a note right now.
Okay. So so on these noise maps, we don't have anything down on the Embarcadero that, you know, has a has a source such as offloading and unloading and truck, trucking and stuff down there. So is that so intermittent that it doesn't count or?
Well, they have ambient noise measurements down there on the Embarcadero in the area that happens.
Okay.
I mean, they're identifying, I mean, you can see like on, along the Embarcadero, you can see, you know, it talks about it, it noise contours and it gives you, it has a little bit of the orange down there, which is sixty-five. Has to do with whether it's traffic on that. Obviously portions of Moro Bay Boulevard, Main Street. And then obviously the main corridor for the highway that runs through town, so. We had them, you know, you know, do the noise measurements in those areas where we get the most traffic.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I kind of find it surprising that the waterfront part of forty-one Extended West has red on it, but the part that goes past the concrete plant and the high school doesn't. And I'm not sure, it would seem like you'd even have more cars and trucks there than you have on that last segment, so. I'm not saying change it, it's just curious the way the map shows up that way.
I'm not sure. I, they always consult, took readings throughout town, so. Have to go back and look at background documentation. Is that exactly where he took those measurements?
Yeah, only because of, as people look at putting the west Embarcadero or the west forty-one area together, if it's says, oh, I thought this was a quieter area. It didn't have anything indicating that was, there was so much noise going on there. It's, it's the high school. And maybe at some point the concrete plant relocates, I'm not sure, but
I think it's closed down now.
Yeah, they're, I mean, they're still paying us, but they want to get out of town.
Yeah.
On restarting that plant again.
I don't think they got the ready mixed plant going there. So the other thing too, Scott, is, you know, sources on the Embarcadero, you know, if we if we have tugs or if we have supply, supply vessels or something down there. How do we handle, how do we handle that? Would that be in the use documentation?
I'm not sure that we haven't addressed anyone.
Nothing on the water would be up to us anyway, right?
Well, if it's a, you know, if it's a tug or a supply vessel sitting there idling, you know, warming up for two or three hours before, before it, you know, disembarks or, you know, loading or offloading, you know, supplies or equipment or something. So you know, I'm thinking if we have a wind generation or wave generation facilities, we would like to have that here. You know, we would like to have the servicing vessels here for the financial activity. So would we handle that on their municipal use permit or?
Well, I mean, potentially, I guess, depending on what was going on out there. I mean, there's, you know, there's policy items, you know, that implement the discussion that's above it, which you're looking at now. You know, and it talks about, you know, including noise reducing feature and those types of things, and evaluating noise, you know, in with noise sensitive uses. And that's got implementation actions that have a whole bunch of things in here that talk about what you, what you do as it relates to projects.
Okay, just
I would think that the, the actual, you know, maritime law, I don't, I don't know what the right word is there, but the maritime rules would apply to, you know, to the vessel on the water. I mean, the city wouldn't actually have jurisdiction of the water, right?
No, I wouldn't. We have, we have restrictions on what can happen in the harbor. We have a whole, we have a whole section of the municipal code, title fifteen, that, that's titled harbor and ocean regulations. And it's got a bunch of stuff in here about, you know, use areas and what you can do where and that type of thing. So I mean, that's kind of where it's dealt with. It's not, it's not in here necessarily.
I do think there's a lot of good implementation actions on this noise issue in its various forms. Just requiring different kinds of studies and mitigation of excessive noise and setbacks and muting of noise reducing technologies. Seems like there's a lot included in here to address the concerns of excessive noise.
Yeah, I agree. I just wanted to bring that up because it wasn't done, wasn't considered. Okay, so moving like one thirty-three, one thirty-four, three, one thirty-five.
You know, I thought was curiously absent was, you know, talk of festivals and concerts and you know, there was, there was a concert at Coleman Park that you could hear in Baywood, so I mean-
There's policies in here to talk about that.
Right, right here in this the noise reduction.
Yeah, I mean, there's policies that talk about it. The noise policy three point two on three, one forty-one. So special events.
Yeah. On the noise reduction strategies, I didn't see any, any mention of noise cancellation technologies. You know, as maybe mitigation efforts. So those are becoming more and more effective. So there's even a there's even a window ventilation fan that has noise cancellation technologies in it. You can have the window open and it cancels out noise coming in.
That's the bar.
Yeah.
Huh. Like constant white noise?
No, it actually, it has a microphone and speakers and a CPU. And so it reads the, reads the exterior noise and then as it produces a sine wave that's exactly opposite and actually cancels out the noise.
Wow.
These AirPods Pros do the same thing and it's magic, I'll tell you what.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think that's covered under the policies under the noise. I mean, it covers a broad range of stuff in here. I mean, it's, and the implementation items. I mean, it's
Yeah.
There's almost nothing you could talk about that's picked up in here.
Implementation action NOI six would require use of mitigation measures, so we have it vague so that we could incorporate things such as what you suggest, Chair Lour.
Okay, because I can even see that, you know, at some point that may even be effective to, you know, put along roadways, you know, rather than sound walls. It'd be a lot cheaper to build, you know, and wouldn't block the view.
All fifteen years, we won't have gas powered vehicles and it won't matter, so.
Yeah, if we give her the tire noise, then we're all set.
Tires are the problem too.
You know, the biggest problem is the nuts behind the wheel. So okay, moving on. One thirty-five, one thirty-six. You know, calls them temporary noise sources. One thirty-eight, one one thirty-nine. Any questions on the implementation actions or the policies?
I did wonder again on that first implementation act on three, one forty. Development of new noise sensitive land uses should not be permitted in areas exposed to existing or future levels of transportation noise. But how's that affect our north Main Street parcels next to one oh, next to Route one?
It just requires, I mean, it just says if you're going to do those, then you have to have noise mitigation, meaning pay attention if you're going to be located next to the highway so that you incorporate, you know, noise mitigations into your construction. You don't have, you don't have vents that face the noise source, those types of things, solid core doors, all that kind of good stuff.
I just want to make sure it didn't seem restrictive toward what could be some of our better
Yeah, all, all this is really telling you is to make sure that when we approve development, that we're looking at the noise issue. It's like, hey, make sure you look at those, you know, when we have, you know, construction happen or development happening in those areas. If it says noise sensitive sources, that would be for like residential development specifically.
Okay, any other notes or comments on? Okay, so then into the green, green print intro, this would be four dash one.
Chair, do you want to check and see if there's anybody with public comment on this section?
Okay.
The only one that we have is in the queue still is Kathy. It sounds like she's just listening.
Yeah. Okay, it's gone so well so far.
On, on the four point one, four dash one, in that second paragraph, yeah, I had the same question there that Jerry raised about the harbor. So is, should we say something like framework for how the city and harbor manages the, I don't know, it just seems like it always, we've got the boats up on, on the picture. So it's like, I was looking at, that's where, that's where I first thought of the question is, how does the harbor work with the general or the green print and the general plan in general? If it's, if it seems like it's too obvious, then that's fine, but
Yeah, it's a you want to chime in on that, Scott? What do you think?
I, I mean, this is, I mean, it's an introduction and it generally talks about, you know, things that are, you know, considered in the green print. I'm not sure, like, I, I, I'm not sure where Lucas was going with it, I
I just wanted to defend that first sentence of the second paragraph serves as a framework for how the city can use, manage, protect its resources to benefit the community, including the bay and harbor front or something like that, because it is a general statement. If you think it reads okay, that's fine. It just, I-
We don't call, I mean, I guess my only thing I would say is we don't call anything else out in here. It just says resources. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't, the sentence doesn't point specifically to-
I might refer us back to the original community vision with our vision and values statement, which talks about Moro Bay being an oceanfront town. It sort of sets the stage for who we are, which is this community that's very connected with our ocean and our heritage related to that. So I feel like that sets the whole stage for the whatever comes after in the document. You could say it goes back to that.
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to see in there too is, you know, I don't know if we need to, but it would just bring up the point of this is a working harbor. You know, we-
Which is mentioned several times in the document.
Right, right.
Yeah, there's no problem. Later on, they talk about water quality and things like that, but it's all right.
I feel like it's in there. Conservation of resources, natural habitat, recreational amenities, that's all land and sea. I suppose if we didn't live here, we might not assume that, but living here, you kind of see this as a package.
Yeah, and this isn't a implementation or a policy, so it's, it's kind of on a lower level. It's more narrative.
It does also show the first pictures of the harbor.
Right, right. Okay, are you comfortable with that, Michael? Okay. Okay, so four, two, four, three. And we come to
Scott, did you see this? I sent you and Jerry some stuff today. Did you see that?
I did. I wasn't sure, I mean, did you want to, you know, talk to the group about it or?
Well, it was just that we started talking about environmental justice element. Just because I'm, I'm teaching that, that website that I showed you that, you know, it's, we, we're in the high end of three, three or four zones there within that corridor where all of our mobile homes are and things like that. And I think it was like the ninetieth percentile of low birth weight, pesticides and something else. And so there's kind of a environmental justice aspect to- And so there's kind of an environmental justice aspect to to acknowledge those problems somewhere in here. And that's when I first saw that, that I thought about it. I'm not necessarily saying that's where to add those things, but I think at some point, if we know from those types of indices that we're seeing, somewhere in the general plan, we ought to be talking about trying to mitigate, you know, pesticides or something like that.
So, at this point, we'd have to go back, reevaluate where all the data behind that comes from, because I don't know. It's not what we used in the baseline assessment for the general plan. So it's problematic. I'm not saying it's not good data, you know, I mean, we've obviously been working on this document for a while. And some new data sources do come up. You know, we have Coastal talking to us right now about, you know, you know, revising, you know, what we're referring to as a ways to sea level rise because there's new, you know, information out there. So, I'm not sure, you know, when do you stop doing background documentation under the document and you just implement it and start using it? I don't know. I don't have a good feel for that. It would be, I have to stop and do a lot of work, and I'd have to get authorization to get money to do that work, and then we'd have to revise this document and the EIR to do it. So I don't know, I I'm not opposed to having the conversation, you know, it is new data. I just, I'm not, I was aware of it, I just, I'm not sure where the data behind it comes from.
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with what we're talking about.
Yeah, so Michael, I think where we can go with this right now, if you could, if you could kind of put that together with a short synopsis on it and send it to Scott, and then he can distribute it to us so we can review it. I think that would get us through the Brown Act so we're not doing a chain communication and stuff.
Yeah, and again, I wasn't trying to blow up the process or anything like that. It was just when I saw that term, environmental justice, I thought, well, I've just been looking at these things, let me see what it says. And when I clicked on, you know, compared to the LA basin or something like that, we look gold, but you know, you start to get into the weeds on the thing and those three or four indices show up. And, you know, I just, I remember, one of these weird things to remember is I remember when I signed off on all the documents for the the house here way back when, one of the things that was a disclosure was crop dusting. And I'd never thought about that, you know, and yet, you know, when I saw that thing said pesticides were up in the high percentiles there that, you know, it comes from the ag corridor that we're part of as well. But there's other places in here I had some comments, but I'll send that to Scott with a little background and maybe we can look at that next meeting as a kind of see if there's anything there. I'm not necessarily saying we have to put those references in here or anything.
Yeah, it gave me a little time to kind of do a little research into it. I looked at it today, I brought up the website and was clicking around at it a little bit, but I didn't get to a place where I could identify where the background information came from, and so I was a little kind of stumped with that, but...
Yeah, I don't know where the metadata is on that stuff either. It's hard to tell, but it was a state website that...
And I saw that. What I was looking for is where to get the background. I couldn't find it, but I maybe spent like 45 minutes messing around. I didn't have a lot of time today, so.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so that'll be good talking points for next time. So then moving on to 45.
I just wondered in 45, again, give me enough time and I'll find more things to add to next time here. Is it appropriate to talk about we're a Tree City USA city and the Winter Bird Festival kind of thing happening here? You know, we actually have events and terminology based on our attitude toward those things.
Are we technically still as Tree City?
Lots of trees.
I think, well, what it takes, what you are one is you just need to pay the fee every year. I'm not sure. I'd have to go see if we paid the fee.
I thought we were, but...
I think, for me, in this document, the goal would to keep it general enough to be inclusive of all of those kinds of things, but not specific enough so that if, say, all the volunteers for the Bird Festival decide they're tired and don't want to do it anymore in five years, we have it on our general plan for 15 years, so.
Right, but I get Michael's point there about ecotourism.
But it does talk about that we see the natural environment is not only intrinsically valuable, but valuable in terms of tourism and the events and the kinds of things that happen.
Yeah, and it does talk about, you know, the sensitive, you know, areas and unique ecological features and stuff of the area, so. It, you know, it may include that for my taste. The other thing that's always funny is that the the weekend of the Bird Festival is when duck season opens up.
The irony is not lost on me either.
Yeah.
But ducks are good.
Yeah, so Michael, you can tell with what we got, or you want to add?
Yeah, no, that's not what I'm going to go to the mat about, that's okay.
Okay, so then 4.6, 4.7, we've got, we have C1.
I was wondering on C1, the habitat map, only because it was part of the tank farm that we took down that had the little asbestos shed issue. Is that, is part of that ESHA up there any of those pieces? Because there's nothing up in that far corner where those tanks were panorama that I saw show up. It may be that it doesn't qualify for any of those pieces, and that's just a map addition, a map.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, it's an area where drainage has been channelized that comes into the city, so probably not one of the habitat types there, that's why it's not shown.
And then we don't have any protected habitat at the, I guess it's technically outside the city. We don't have to show the wharf cat stuff, right? The wastewater recovery stuff.
Yeah, but it's outside of the city limits, I mean, you're correct. We just, yeah.
So, 49, 410, so we've got the map, and then we're to 410, 411. Four, so we have the other figure C2 on 412.
And 414's got a problem down at the end, bottom of the page. Got some Bodega Bay and San Diego Bay stuff down there that I think is an error.
Yeah, I noted that also.
That's actually language from the Coastal Act, so we checked that out, it's actually not a title.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
That's a cut and paste from the Coastal Act, is what I, how I read it, is that correct?
I'm sorry, what was that?
That was a cut and paste from the Coastal Act, is that how?
Right, yeah.
How it happened?
Yeah.
It's required to be in the document.
Oh, weird.
It's out of the regs.
Okay. Then just on item number two, I don't know if we can change any of that, but it doesn't mention any of the marinas in there. You know, the harbor marinas as far as the dredging, in relation to the dredging.
What page are you looking at?
It's 414, under A2.
We can't take any of this stuff, it's all out of the regs.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's, they require us to have it just like this.
Okay. And then, okay, so we're still moving 415.
I guess just a question on 415 on that last section about the wetland dikes and things, where it talks about fill development permitted in wetlands.
Is that still the Coastal Act?
This is all out of the Coastal Act.
Okay, this is more of a question though. That area on, I guess that's still South Main at that point, by the bike park, where they're doing a lot of filling, that's not wetlands or anything. They're allowed to fill in there and raise that level.
Which area?
It's by the little bike riding area just above our, just below our lovely antenna we approved.
It's where the guy did the containers.
Yeah, I see people put things in there that look like fill to me. I'm just, I'm just...
Oh, are you talking about basically on the other side of the street, on Main Street?
East, yeah, the east side.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know that that's necessarily legal dumping. I think it's been a perennial location to put fill there when you have extras, just anecdotally speaking.
It's still where the ramp is?
Where the guy put the sea train and the horses and the big fence around the corner. I think it's Hawthorne and Main, right?
Radcliffe and...
Well, and that property there, there at the corner...
Cindy froze.
Lost you, Cindy. It's a construction yard, so having machilah come in and out of there is not surprising.
Yeah.
We lost Cindy.
Smart woman.
So this does bring up a little bit, you know, the wording on this and stuff, it did get into revetments and stuff. So when we talk about the embarkadero, that just kind of, just seems like a place to insert a, for future items too, is maybe we need to create a, you know, a separate zone for the revetments for the for the embarkadero armoring.
We have language to do for that.
Okay.
At least I haven't gotten to it yet.
Okay, so we got...
We worked with Coastal on that quite a bit. They gave us a language that we could use that allows us to do repair to those facilities, whereas you wouldn't normally be able to repair revetments, you know, that were subject to wave action and those types of things, so they separated them out, so.
Right. Somewhere in here, I kind of lost it, but it was on the ESHA and the bluff face. Did we clarify that the inland bluff, you know, the bluff face where it is?
I don't recall if we have a map, I'll have to wait until we get to it. We do have a language in there that addresses them and unfortunately bluffs are defined in the regs, but Coastal gave us some language that we could use, so we're not treating them like bluffs that are on the waterfront. Unfortunately, the regs identifies anything, you know, that was subject to wave action in the last 200 years as a bluff. Sort of ignores the fact this whole area, you know, was filled in and the harbor's not going anywhere. So, anyway, yeah, but they were understanding and they gave us the language we could use that would allow us, based on what they said, to not, you know, have to treat them like, say, bluffs in Pismo Beach in front of the cliffs or something like that.
Okay, good. Okay, so we're up to, like, the next blank page is 418, so we have Figure C3, any questions on that? You know, Scott, just a question on this as far as hazard zones for the, for liquefaction. Does, did the data take into account the fact that sea level rise is going to raise the level of groundwater? Because, especially over in the cloisters, you know, if you go into to an underground vault there that's six inches under, you know, six inches under the sidewalk, it's filled with water nine, 10 months out of the year.
It just deals with liquefaction, you know, I mean, in general, I mean, not sure.
I mean, so the geological...
What page is your concern on?
It's further forward, I just wanted, you know, briefly, it was actually in the implementation and goals, I think, where it was required geological surveys and stuff. And one of the, one of the studies that I read lately is that it's under-reported, and one of the problems with coastal land is that as the sea level rises, you have the groundwater also rises with it because it floats on top, because it's lighter. And then that creates coastal zones where liquefaction is much more critical because the water's closer to the surface than it was before.
I don't know if there's anything here that, you know, is inconsistent with that.
Yeah, it didn't seem like it, but it also didn't mention it either, but I think it will fit in. Okay, so 419, we're in the goals and policies. So this is the ESHA developments and stuff. And Zeke, we don't have anybody wishing to comment on the ESHA policies, do we?
No, sir, Mr. Chair, there's nobody with their hand raised.
Okay, thank you.
And on 420 and then on to 421, the Dune ESHA, I was just wondering, where do we address the individual residents who, apart from, we've asked them to retreat from the ESHA, but then they have the option to do their own armoring? If they're outside the ESHA at some point?
No armoring.
No armoring?
No armoring.
Do we ever say that in here, Dune ESHA?
Yeah. I mean, I don't think we're to that section yet.
Yeah, okay.
On the document.
All right. I just didn't remember how it's connected, then, that's great.
Well, I might have missed it, Scott, and I miss a lot of stuff on this. Did we have conditions on here on the ESHA, on the landscaping and the restoration of the ESHA, to require that they use native plants that are consistent with the ecological zone that they're in?
Let's see.
Policy C1.4B talks about that for dunes.
Yeah, I'm thinking consistently about the dunes.
It talks about revegetation, it talks about you must use native plants. That's Implementation Act in C10 on 426. There's probably others in here as well. It looks like Mutation C9 in relation to ash says the same thing. C9, see where feasible and where native vegetation is not already present, native vegetation screening must be planted between the ESHA and the development.
So I guess I'm nitpicking on this, but you know, the native plants can also, can be a wide range. It doesn't specify that they're native to that ecological zone. You know, so, you know, you can put, you know, you know, manzaneta could be native, but it may not be native to a Dune habitat, or it may not be native to this particular site. So we need to get into that specificity on this, or?
I think it would be difficult to do that in the general plan. I mean, you know, we have zones here where, you know, certain types of plants grow. We have never been really more specific than that. I mean, the native plant thing is throughout the document. I can't get like six or seven pages without it coming up again, I mean, it's...
Right, okay, okay.
Yes, I just want to say on 421, you know, to me, I had to read it about six times before I was okay with it, but that last paragraph there where it talks about how the 50-foot buffer goes down to 25 feet, I can see everybody asking for that. And so, but it says you have to have the biological studies and other materials to prove it, so I think we're covered there. I just really think in the future, the Esches are really going to be terribly important. I think we've abused that in the past by not recognizing their uniqueness and so that where we allow it down to 25 feet, that's almost nothing. And I think it's okay though, by the way, it's backed up by the, you have to have proof.
Yeah, and the point behind the reduction is really to be used in cases where, you know, the development's substantially inhibited, because you have a right to develop your property to some extent and this is what lets you to do that. We have some, our current policies, you know, we have a couple of properties in town that if you can't follow them and... We have some, our current policies, you know, we have a couple of properties in town that if you can't follow them and get there, and Coastal has this kind of weird gymnastics they do to allow them to develop in these areas. And because it's in the builder's sticks and they can do it, we don't have that tool. Um, we're just kind of throw our hands up and go like, yeah, you can't do that. So, um, uh, it's interesting process. So that they've, they've actually, Coastal actually revised some of the language in here, um, to, to address that issue that we were running into. Um, this is, this is actually consistent with the current policy, but there's some others in here that, that talk about it as well.
Okay, so, uh, so moving forward into the policies. Um, like four twenty-two, four twenty-three.
On the bottom of four twenty-two, that, that takings one, I was looking at that quite a bit too. And I, I think that's, that's okay. I, I think we even had some correspondence about somebody on that one and.
Yeah, this is, that's the thing that we have, a couple of properties in town where this, this comes into play.
And a question on four twenty-three, do we have a ratio for tree planting and removal? Like if you take down a tree, do we have a plant three more or six more or just one? If it's going to be the same size or?
I think it's, I think it's one to one if it's fifteen gallon, if it's smaller than that, it's two to one. That's the street, that's adopted tree policy that's adopted by city council resolution.
It's not species dependent?
Go ahead, I'm sorry Jesse, go ahead.
I'm sorry, is that, is that not species dependent? That's just, um, tree for tree or?
Yeah, well, I mean, sometimes you'll try to take down trees that aren't native. Hey Cindy's back.
Sorry about that, I was trying to do a firmware update or something.
I think that's what happened, she got hungry.
She needed a glass of wine.
I had no internet last night either and I thought maybe that was an omen.
Hey Scott, is, is there, with respect to taking down trees, is there any equivalency when, particularly when a very large, tall old tree is taken down because it's diseased? Is there anything that we could use that requires that we, 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 first of all, we plant a tree that could reach similar heights? Or we somehow do an equivalency that says this old tree that was fifty feet tall with a diameter of, you know, five feet? We have to, we have to plant several trees or put them at a bank of trees somewhere?
There, there, there isn't, um, I would say most of the trees that get, you know, taken out, people come to us with are, you know, on residential properties. So if you have a very large tree that's got a huge diameter and big branches in a house, you're probably not super comfortable with that. You probably don't want another tree planted on your property that's going to be the same size because you're going to run into the same issues with the potentially of having branches fall on your house or your neighbor's house. Um, you know, so I don't know, we don't have a policy like that, but I'm guessing the reason I gave you is probably why we don't have that. Um, because it's an issue and that's oftentimes why people want to take trees down is because they can become dangerous or they're so large that branches are hanging over portions of their house or something.
And, and what about trees that are in those, those, uh, the, the right of ways? The, the parking area in, in front of a house? I can think of several very large trees that were recently taken down and they're landmarks in the city.
Yeah, they can be taken down by our public works departments, um, for various reasons. A lot of times we get requests to remove them, um, and we'll have one and two and three arborist reports that, you know, justify the removal, um, in case they're damaged or they're going to fail, be, you know, potentially be, oftentimes it's because of wind throw, they have issues, they're unbalanced, things like that, that happens. And they can't be trimmed and make them balanced sometimes. Sometimes they can, um, and then we do the trimming as opposed to the, uh, taking the trees out, um.
But, but, but there, but there isn't any responsibility as of yet in terms of the homeowner, the, the property owner. He, he's, he's not held responsible for replacing that diseased tree or, or the three or four or half a dozen equivalents that might equal that tree at some kind of visionary, uh, vision equation, I'm stumbling through this.
I mean, we sometimes replace the trees when we remove them in the right of way. We don't have a requirement that the owners do that, I don't believe.
So Scott, we've talked about tree banks and biomass equivalency for trees in certain, after a certain timeframe. Have we ever gotten any further with that or is that something that could be pursued? So like, like what Joe's talking about is if, if somebody takes down a landmark tree or the city takes down a landmark tree, you know, is it possible for us to team up with either the parks department or the, uh, the state park? And be able to, to plant two or three trees in fifteen years that'll have the same biomass equivalency of the one that got taken down?
Uh, there's an implementation item C dash nine point one three on four sixty-two that does that.
Yeah, that's down the line a little bit, yeah.
Because that should be also in our greenhouse gas, you know, mitigation measures too. So. Okay, um, four dash twenty-three, four dash twenty-four, the implementation actions, four dash twenty-five.
Yeah, and four twenty-four, um, this is another one that blew my mind where we can take the, the set back down to ten feet. Uh, I don't know, I, that one scares me, but, um, I, I assume that, that it's the staff reviewing that all practical design modifications are evaluated. It's not somebody just coming in and saying, I can't do it.
No, you're typically dealing with projects when you're dealing with actually having to go before the planning commission anyone, so.
Yeah.
Public hearings and notices and all that kind of good stuff, so. And these are, these are tools because, you know, we run into issues with these things and, you know, you potentially run into takings problems or you make a project, property undevelopable. So we need at least some ability to, to deal with these issues and not have them be concrete because then the property potentially becomes undevelopable and then that's an issue from the city. We don't, we're not really interested in buying a bunch of lots because, um, we have policies that don't allow development.
But this is also talking about passive recreational and educational uses, maintenance of existing utilities, which makes sense. You've got to have access to those. But I could see, you know, as an educational facility to go into the estuary, you might at some point need a little boardwalk area so that children could have an educational experience. I don't know, so the ten feet, you might need it to get a little closer to what you're looking at safely.
Do we control all this guys? Okay. Four twenty-five, four twenty-six, four twenty-seven. Cultural and historic, uh, resources.
Yeah, I, I've got four twenty-seven, I've got a bunch of things here. Um, the one, the one thing, um, I'm, I'm not sure it's offensive to the, to the Schumash and Salinas or not, but this idea that, when I read that paragraph, I read it a couple of times and it said that they were, they were decimated as if they were, they were wiped out completely. And they're not, they're still here. And there's nothing that really speaks to that in, in, in the thing. And, and I don't know, that decimated worried me. And I'm, I'm not sure any of the Schumash groups refer to themselves as a Biscapeno Schumash. Like, that's a, that's an outsider.
So our, our Schumash folks did review this, I know the Schumash tribal, um, folks reviewed it. Um, and actually edited this section heavily.
Okay, but I'll defer to them.
I love Native American heritage and that, that doesn't offend me because it would offend me if it didn't say something like that.
No, no, I, I, I just, it, it just sounded to me like it was past content. You know, it's, it's too bad that we decimated them, you know, it's an admission, but it also sounds as if there's no legacy.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, we've spent time working with the tribe, tribal, uh, representatives on this. Um, and really, you know, sort of having them put, you know, absolutely, you know, untrue things in here, we sort of let, said, go ahead, review, give us your input and we'll revise it. We weren't trying to, to dictate in any way, you know, we had some, uh, references in here to the documents they didn't want us to use and we took them out. I mean, we were really trying to, we didn't want to tell.
It just really talks about like sins of our father kind of thing and, and, you know, says, you know, says to, says globally, we, we recognize that we weren't always doing the right thing here. So, I mean, I think that clearly says that to me.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not disputing that at all. I, I just, I sort of didn't want to make it say like, uh, uh, the, what's one of our, uh, species? We've lost it, it sounded like there's, there's no legacy folk here to deal with and the.
Right, I get you.
Yeah, this, this goes back and forth. These, these paragraphs seem very odd to me, like they had been moved around quite a bit. They go back and forth between historic and then archaeological and paleologic, paleontological resources. And it's kind of like, I, I don't think it reads very well, but I don't want to spend an hour wordsmithing it here. But there's something about some of them, the, the last paragraph or the first paragraph on, um, get my note out of the way, four twenty-eight. You know, the, the bottom of that sounds like it's dealing with something totally different and the top part seems like it's more like a historic building survey. You know, so it's one paragraph that has the, the, kind of the historic ordinance that may be coming forward soon. And then the, um, this, this idea of a cultural resource overlay zone, which I thought was more about the prehistoric materials rather than the, like the historic building zone, but I'm, I'm, am I reading that wrong?
I, I mean, the archaeological overlay zone is to deal with archaeological, uh, these sensitive areas in town. Um, and we've, and we're doing that, I mean, you actually have seen this in the zoning code.
No, I think it's great. I just wonder, it, it just reads awfully awkward to me that you've got a paragraph that has two really distinct things that, that they talk about adaptive reuse and older buildings and, uh, then all of a sudden, boom, it gets into this overlays and I'd, I'd almost make a new paragraph out of it. That, that's all, that's kind of professorial stuff, which, that's all right.
I can see that.
I can't, I can't, I can't ask the, the professional technical writers to rise to the level of my students that I would, I would have.
My extra students are that good.
Uh, okay, so then we're, we're moving on to the goals, goals and policies, uh, so four twenty-six. The C two one.
This is a jargon thing. I didn't see, I don't think where, what a BMP was. It's, it says in the middle of policy two point C, two point three, and add a, include adequate BMPs. And it's like, uh, what's that? I, I was looking.
Best management practices?
But it should be, it should be defined there before, while you're.
Yeah, it should have it.
In its first use.
Yeah.
It's, uh, so, uh, what page was this on?
It's, uh, four twenty-six.
Yeah, C two point three.
Uh, is, uh, it is later in the document. Oh, you know why? Because some of this stuff got moved around.
Ah, okay.
Um, I'm, I'm fairly certain.
I couldn't guess that.
A good point though, we can, we'll, we'll put that in there for twenty. Ken? It was which one again? Sorry, I'm just trying to find it. C two point three, got it, okay.
Not everybody does with that every single day of every, of their life.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's in about three other locations further down the document, about twenty pages forward of this.
Wow. Very jurgid, though, I agree.
Yeah. Okay, so we good with the implementation actions, this C dash fifteen? Anything else in there that we need to go over?
The, the one thing I would say relative to what I, I sent previously that we, we briefly talked about is on four twenty-eight, under pollution sources. You know, it, there might, there might be something there. It, it talks about crop tilling, but I would say and, and other agricultural amendments, something like that. Uh, or potential agricultural amendments because you don't want to imply every amendment's a pollution source. But I, I don't know, maybe that's not the right place or maybe it needs another paragraph.
And agricultural activities rather than crop tilling?
Maybe, you know, but it talks about, it's about air quality as well too. It's, it, it may be that I was reading too tightly and I saw pollution sources and I think, well, that, that, maybe that's where it belongs. But maybe it doesn't belong here at all. Cause it's talking about dust and tilling and it's, it's getting particulates in the air more than it is toxins. And there is something farther on that talks about toxins. I remember seeing that.
Okay, so did you want to make any adjustments to that, Michael, or you want to?
No, just the, the, the toxins show up on four dash thirty. That's, that's where it would be. So that's, that's where there, there might be something about, uh, la, 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 la. I mean, they're basically talking about the, the list, the listing organizations keep lists of what's toxic currently. And so I guess it would fall in there. So maybe there's no reason to overtly state it, but.
Covers, covers that pretty good in that middle paragraph with TAC sources in California include diesel. And further down, the state has identified nearly two hundred other.
Yeah.
ACs.
Yeah, I, I think I was, I was okay with that.
Yeah. Okay. Just kind of, you know, editorial comment here, it just seems like we should be testing these products before we've subject them to the population rather than wait till we find out that they produce cancers twenty years later, but.
Like vaping?
Yeah, like vaping, like Roundup. Various other things. Okay, so I don't think that good fits in the general plan. Let's move on. Uh, so policy three dash one through three dash seven is, anybody have any issues with any of those?
How did you know someone would turn off their car when they're idling in front of your store for like twenty minutes? I mean, you go out with a big stick and say, turn off your damn car, you know, open your window? You get air conditioning that way or?
Well, we need to get rid of the, you know, the infernal combustion engine altogether, so. Speaking of that, um, is, let me just throw this in there. In the park and ride section on C three dash three, C three, uh, dash three point six. In the park and ride, should we do, you know, create EV level, EV charging stations? As a incentive on that policy? Or is that?
I don't think it ever hurts to say consider things like, it, it doesn't commit us. But I'm not sure where that park and ride would go to. I guess we'd go downtown to Slow or something, but.
Well, there's a great, there's a great little lot down to, you know, next to Lemos.
We do have policy, um, C I R four point seven, that's alternative options. It's in the circulation element.
Okay.
That would require or sta- establish EV charging at, uh, bike sharing and park and ride locations throughout Morro Bay and in particular close to transit and amenities.
Okay.
That, that might capture what you're seeking.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, then from my brain, you know, it, it talks about supporting the future development and really these are kind of state initiatives or federal initiatives that are going, we're going to, you know, just jump onto. So, I mean, you know, say we do go all electric in fifteen years and then, you know, all of a sudden the city is, got it in the general plan that we're going to support, um, you know, future development that is in association with that. So I think, I think we're good there, so.
Okay.
That, that telecommuting policy there is pretty prescient. That was, that's great. When we started writing this like six years ago.
Yeah, there was also one about viral vectors, which, uh, I thought was rather poignant. Okay, so then here we get into the greenhouse gas emissions.
I guess this is just a, this is just a general moan when I saw it. It's like two thousand and five emissions and then we'll increase thirty-seven percent by twenty twenty-five. It's like, that's just around the corner. And then the emissions reduction target by twenty twenty, it's like, I know we can't change any of this, but my gosh, it's all going to be historic by the time it's approved, right?
Yeah.
There's no way to, no way to update that.
Keep trying.
Well, I mean, the good thing is that we are actually right, right now, working on the, um, we're going to be starting work on the climate action plan, uh, it needs to be. we're going to be starting work on the climate action plan. It needs to be updated. So that part of it's, you know, I mean, cause it's at the end of its, you know, its life. And so we'll be updating that. And so that'll, that'll pick up these generally, right? And then make them new again, right? So that part of it's good. And that's part of the policies and implementation items that come out of here. So.
Well, one of the exciting things that's coming up is, uh, I think, uh, CARB, um, is doing, is implementing, um, with a class six, uh, truck, truck, um, systems down in the Southern California where, where you have like thirty, thirty foot box trucks that are all electric now. And they've, they've just did a program where they implemented like ten million dollars worth and they bought a bunch of the trucks for delivery trucks down in the LA Long Beach area. So, so these things are coming and.
So those are the ones that, that capture the, uh, the kinetic energy of the braking system and then transfer that back to the battery?
Yeah, almost all EVs do. Yeah. And so, yeah, and, um, so that's another, another point to, we would be at the end of the line, but this would be an applicable point. But, you know, gas charging systems that are capable of charging, you know, transportation, you know, class six trucks and stuff. Because. But anyway, um, okay. So we go through his table, C, B two, four thirty-three. Policy four point four, and then implementation actions on, on page four thirty-four. And then we go to energy resources.
At the top of four thirty-five, technically we're not, because the, the city opted into the Central Coast Community Power. Aren't we technically supplied by Central Coast Community Power instead of through PG&E's lines or something like that?
Talks about that in third paragraph there. I don't know if that's what you're talking about, but.
Yeah. Well, even that, even the names changed though since then.
Yeah.
So, and the, and the renewable piece where it says Morro Bay does not currently have its own energy producing units uses. And it's like, well, yeah, we do. It's, it's the distributed rooftop solar. So I would say aside from distributed rooftop solar, Morro Bay does not currently have its own power energy producing uses.
What, what paragraph?
That's, that's in four thirty-five. That's the first paragraph under renewable energy production and use.
Yeah, I thought that was pretty dated, too. I think it's going to.
And then change the name of the Monterey Bay Community Power down at the bottom of that paragraph as well.
Okay. Anything else up to that point from anybody? Okay.
I, I stopped going through my, my massive charts and I just read the thing. It was easier. I don't know what we lost, but I'm, I'm just looking at what we have.
Okay. Uh, goals and policies on four thirty-six. And then four thirty-seven.
Yeah, I just, I just like that renewable energy and municipal uses. I think that's a really smart thing.
Yeah.
I'd love to see us figure out some way to, to do a, a new city hall in some, uh, less expensive place and, uh, you know, do it right.
Do our plans, put them out there.
Well, some people like Morro Elementary as a site for the city offices. All those, they come in there, send them back to school.
We need older buildings. That's great.
I know. Older ones, need some updating, a little asbestos in the basement.
Need a little more than a little updating. Place is falling down.
It has a new roof, I heard.
Sort of.
Uh, okay. So, uh, we're up to four thirty-seven. Uh, moving on, we've got water resources and conservation. I think we've talked a bunch about this through the years. Of four thirty-nine.
Just a question here, Scott. I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt. This is, has actually nothing to do with the general plan. Um, the city is issuing will serves for all ADUs and G D J ADUs that request them, right?
Uh, we don't issue will serve letters. We just, we, we have the water available. They just can come in and get their water meters if they need them.
Okay. Sorry.
We don't have a limitation other than our water equipment, the unit things, and we never push up against it. So we're good.
Okay. Uh, four forty-one, stormwater. And then, and then once again, you know, we, I brought this up several times. This is the watershed on figure C dash five on four forty. You know, we're not even showing on there the Highway forty-one watershed, which is going to be our, you know, our watershed for, once, once we do the reuse project.
I think one of the things about that one is they've combined a lot of the watersheds. So they're actually talking about that one is, as, as a combined watershed that goes all the way up to, to Whale Rock. So that's probably got about six, six watersheds, uh, in that one.
That's correct.
And then also down below, you know, they don't split Los Angeles Creek from, from Choro Creek. But, uh, so I think it's just a combined thing. I, I was, I was just curious why that's the boundary that, that was chosen, but, uh, but.
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
Probably geological.
I don't know.
Well, they're, they're separate hydrological basins. You know, they don't, they don't transport between them.
Yeah, that's the, that's the old fault. So it could be something that's a, a bridge or a, a barrier.
Okay. Uh, so we're up to four forty-five, the wastewater and wastewater in Morro Bay.
On four forty-five, I'm just curious, in that last, on the top paragraph, the last line, the last, or the next, the last sentence. It says, "The imminent removal of wastewater flows from Cayucus from the waste stream treated at Morro Bay Plant will slow the increase of wastewater levels in Morro Bay." Did that mean to say Astero Bay? Because everything's dumped into the ocean. So that would be Astero Bay, I think. Cause that's implying there's a wastewater issue with the effluent getting into the bay. And I've never heard that before. And I would, I would have had my ears open for that one.
The, the only wastewater treatment that treated wastewater that gets into Morro Bay, from what I understand is from the, the, you know.
CM.
CMC.
Yeah.
Well, won't the WRF overflow at its proposed location overflow into the estuary in, in the, in the future? Isn't that the overflow location? Into Choro Creek is what I understood.
A portion of it could go there. Yeah. I believe so.
But it's just a, it, it's a technical thing. It, it struck me that it's intuitively wrong to be more obeyed. But it could be technically right based on some of these things that are being said. This, this time of day, some of my neurons don't fire sharply as others. But, uh, when I, when I read through that, I thought that can't be right.
Well, I mean, if, if the new WRF did have a overflow situation, it would overflow into Choro Creek, which would go into the, into Morro Bay in the future, not at this time, but in the, you know, when the WR is complete.
Then, then the text isn't right because if it's going to slow the increase of wastewater levels into Morro Bay, it.
No, it's going to exacerbate it.
It's going to increase it. Yeah. So that's why I think it's Astero Bay. But I don't know if we ever really even mentioned that because that's technically not part of our turf after you get to the beach, I guess, right? We don't go into the ocean. We, we go to the like high tideline or something, mean tideline.
Uh, we'll, we'll, uh.
Take a look at that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Four forty-six, we get the goals and policies, C sevens. Uh, four forty-seven.
Aren't we, um, isn't the D cell plant getting mouthballed? Did I read that wrong?
I think it's getting removed. From what I understood.
Policy C seven dash eleven is continued to operate. The D cell plant is, as needed. I wondered if we need to scratch that?
Yeah. I mean, we use the reverse osmosis component. We're on it right now, actually. Um, state water is turned off and we're, um, we're using the, the, um, the reverse osmosis component of the, uh, of the plant. We are, we, we are no longer using the D cell component of it.
Should we eliminate that as a policy in the general plan?
But if we're going to be using a component of it, should we just rename it?
Uh, that's what I was thinking. Yeah.
Well, the D and D cell and RO are different. Yeah, completely different things.
You know, I lost my note on it, but it's somewhere it talked about green, green streets. Where, um, it was water, uh, biofilter and water. You know, water jan, drainage retention for green streets.
Bioswells.
You know, bioswells. And I don't think we ever got to a policy on that, did we, Scott? I can't even know where I saw it. I don't.
Isn't the, isn't the state kind of ahead of us on that now? I mean, didn't they, didn't they start mandating a lot more stormwater management on site? That people are using all those types of devices?
Yeah. I mean, there's a bunch of things talked about on four forty-eight at the bottom.
There's also a policy in the community design element, um, that encourages rainwater bioswells.
Yeah. I mean, this, it talks about water recharge and, you know, this is policy C seven dash, uh, C seven point, yeah, a dot one five. Sorry. I can't speak. Um, speaks to that, too.
Okay.
Seven point one seven, you know, minimizes new impervious surfaces.
Yeah.
But there's a, there's a whole bunch of that stuff in.
Yep. So, um, are we actually implementing any of this with like curb cuts and, uh, around tree wells and stuff like that as, as the engine, as public work started looking at any of that stuff?
Uh, I'm not sure. Given the dramatic, very reduced staffing over there at this point, probably not.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
They, when we, when we looked at that, uh, that lower income project, they had a massive underground system there. You know, so I don't know if they were, I think they had a bioswale piece. And if I'm not mistaken, the hotel on just to the west of Route one on forty-one West had, had a bioswale component to in the front.
Yeah, that's correct.
And then the, the, you know, I'm down at the marina a lot, so I'm focused on that. So as far as the, um, the parking lot at the marina in the state park.
Every day.
Pardon?
Every day. A, A P has a, I mean, I just saw the coastal development permit, the waiver come back from coastal, um, in my inbox, I think this week or last week.
Okay. So are they doing bioswells? Are they doing any mitigation on that?
I don't exactly know the entirety of the project. I mean, I met with, uh, Lexi on it a while ago. We agreed to a consolidated permitting process with coastal and I don't remember anything beyond that. I don't know if Cindy does or not. It was a while ago.
Okay.
Although I can't be certain, I'm, I'm pretty sure that the bioswells are a feature of the project. That, that does sound familiar.
It just, it, it struck me as funny that the state park system, when they came forward with that projected, uh, project that, that we reviewed and how, how they, how, how they didn't evaluate, um, potential for, uh, water pollution from their wastewater treatment, from their septic system that they had there. So.
How hypocritical they were?
Pardon? Yeah, basically.
I'll say it.
So, okay. So moving on, uh, before I get myself in more trouble here, uh, four fifty, four fifty-one.
Good.
I have a question about four fifty-two. Did, do we have any, any idea that we get anything close to that first state goal in town? I mean, I'm, I'm not.
Oh. We do have a waste stream reduction requirement. Um, you know, I mean, so it's, it's an ongoing thing. I mean.
I just wonder if the state actually hit that or anything close to it.
My understanding is the recycling component that at the, um, trash collecting place, whatever you call it, that they're, they're not, they're not separating it in a way that's conducive to that. Or that's in, my brain's not working either. That's, um, they're not meeting that goal because the separation at the, at the plant isn't adequate.
Yeah. I know it's something they're required to continue to improve. Um, I don't have a lot of information beyond that, though.
But that anaerobe, that anaerobic composter they put in there was gold. I mean, that thing is pumping out stuff and they sold it years in advance of, of when it was, uh, the green waste composter down by the airport.
Yeah.
Things are great. The Hitachi Zosen project. I understand that that's working well, but I, but my understanding is that the, uh, the separation in the blue, the, the blue containers that we put our recycles in, recyclables in. I mean, they're able to extract, you know, the easy stuff like the aluminum cans and the two liter bottles. But, you know, everything else is kind of just getting thrown back in the trash. So.
Yeah. Well, China's not accepting it. Neither is Indonesia.
Yeah, it's one of the big problems.
So there's, I guess we need to figure out a way to use it here. Um, okay. Uh, how are you guys feeling on this? Are we, we just spinning our wheels and getting blurry eyed? Do you want to take a break or you want to? What's the consensus here? Do we want to wrap this up and get it on the next meeting?
I'm, I'm not sure I've got a good handle on how much, um, more we have. I've got another, I know I've got probably, uh, I think I maybe got visual resources done, but I'm not sure I've got much after that. But I wouldn't mind taking a little bit of a break here. The, the time change and, and the darkness is, uh, it's.
Right.
Making me a little crazy.
Well, we're past eight o'clock already. Uh, I know we.
We have to give, we have to give Kathy about, you know, some time at the next meeting. I mean, when we get her.
That's going to be a, yeah, it's going to be a pretty full discussion. I would say that, um, you know, I mean, if, you know, it looks like. Yeah.
If we had a break, if we had a break, I'd be happy to come back and try and knock off visual resources.
Okay. All right. Sounds good.
Okay. So let's go ahead and take, let's go ahead and take five. Is that good enough for everybody? Just stretch our legs.
Yeah.
Well, probably take seven. Go get back here.
Eight fifteen.
Section, which you don't need to review because it's after the policies and all the previous sections and elements. And then there's the, uh, the glossary.
We did about eighty tonight so far.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think we did a hundred and twenty.
Did a hundred and fifty last time.
Hundred and fifty last time. So.
I feel like we should.
I feel like we should at least go till nine o'clock. And, and maybe like looking at coastal's comments, um, they didn't have a lot in certain of these, so they didn't make a lot of changes from the original stuff that we saw. Um, let's see, they did in public safety. I guess I'm an open space. Yeah, never mind. I lied. Got a lot of conservation.
Yep.
Yeah.
I lied, but I, for me, actually, I sort of, you know, cross checking their changes with the other stuff, it didn't feel too substantive and I did mark a few things, so I don't know if maybe people just had highlights of stuff they were concerned about.
Well, quite frankly, I'm not, uh, you know, this is with the election last night and everything.
Rolling.
I don't have a lot of resources left. So, uh, so let's get through. Let's go for a few minutes longer. I think we're on, uh, we're on four fifty two now. And then, um, we'll just, uh, we'll do the best we can on the next meeting. So four fifty two, four fifty three. And then we're in the visual resources and view sheds on four fifty five.
On four fifty six, you look at the fourth bullet down, it talks about maintenance of scenic highway conditions. And I know we're talking about when it's, the previous comment is when assessing views in of and around Morro Bay, it's important to consider the following. And maintenance of scenic highway conditions, I think they're deplorable. We don't want to maintain them. We want to improve them, don't we?
Yeah.
They're, 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 I can't think of anything worse.
Yeah.
Our Caltrans chain link fence, but, uh, at least our cups in it anymore.
Yeah, I think we need more rust on it. We got to make sure the rust stays.
I was on mute. I was trying to ask a question about, uh, four fifty three to Scott. Um, why don't we have a recycling facility here in, in the city?
Funny you should ask. We have one that's going to be coming soon.
Oh.
Yeah.
But I mean, why haven't we had one up to now? Was it, is it a private industry thing that no one just?
It is. They, we had two for a while, we had two for a long time and then we were down to one, then they left and no one, and they didn't come back. And that was just kind of the way it was. And, uh, but now we have one that's interested in, um, in coming back. They just literally started talking to us about it over at Spencer's, so hopefully that comes to fruition.
Okay, good. Okay, so do we want to change the terminology of maintenance? You got a better word, Michael?
I, improvement of scenic highway conditions, be fine.
Enhancement.
Yeah. Okay, any of those will work.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Scott, just pick one. Okay, so then, uh, figure C seven, seven on four fifty seven.
Yeah, I, I have, I have a comment on C seven. You know, so how, how was, how was the, how was the, the, the rating of the scenic views determined? I, I'm thinking when somebody, we, somebody ultimately battles some development project, you don't want to suggest that a view that's going to be obscured was only a fair view. I, I don't think we're doing ourselves any favor by, by having this fairly arbitrary grading of views.
So you guys have reviewed this three times now. Um, you made comments on it. We fixed, and we've made changes to it based on your comments, but I mean, so I'm not sure where you want to go with it, other than I would think we would be done at this point. I mean, it's, it's been a long time, so I, I shouldn't say it just like that, but, um, this is, every time, every time you look at this, you have your comments about it. It, it's, it would be difficult to do something, you know, more comprehensive, you know, that wouldn't cost a lot of money to evaluate specifically what this is. I mean, these views relate to, you know, how much of a view angle you have in these locations and kind of what you're looking out at. And I think that's how they were evaluated. And they stem from, um, our current LCP is my recollection. Um, so, uh, you know, we weren't, we weren't breaking a lot of new grounds here. These were, you know, areas with, um, you know, that are identified in the current LCP as well, so.
And, and I would add too, that I think from the, the public draft and the planning commission looked at this, is there were, um, the direction from planning commission was that there were additional viewpoints that, um, that you all wanted to add and, and, and then also recognizing that the, uh, the scenic hills to our east, um, are also viewpoints. So, um, uh, we have expanded on this.
Well, I, I mean, I'm not, to be clear, I'm not suggesting that we shouldn't, we shouldn't designate the views. I'm just, I don't think, I don't think we should decide that one view is more important than another view. That's all.
But it's a fair, you know, it's a fair point, Joe. And, and actually the document doesn't do that. This says, hey, here, here's some of them. And, and the doc, and the policy says this is not all of them. Um, and so if you have a project or something that's going in in a place where you potentially have the ability to block public views, um, and there are views from that location that aren't identified on this map, then that's an issue as well. Um, so it's not just these locations. These are just the locations that we, you know, picked up and pulled out of the other, um, out of the current LCP. And then we ran it through, um, G pack. I mean, this stuff was actually in the, I think the baseline assessment, so it's been around for a while. It's been, that's why I said three times, so I think it was reviewed there. And then it was reviewed in a, in one of the preliminary drafts and then the public draft, it was reviewed. Thank God it's not, so maybe this is the fourth time you've seen it. Um, so I, I, I don't know. I mean, I'm, I'm open to other things. This isn't just the end all be all. If you don't have a view in this location, it's not identified, it's fine. And it is something that we can, um, change over time. Uh, so I'm, I'm comfortable there. Um, we did make edits based on the last planning commission review, as Cindy said, so, uh, you have to go back and look at that, 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 that track change version of it though, to see them, but.
So Scott, just, this is probably a side point. It's not directly related to the document, but there's a about the two hundred block of Main Street heading towards the state park. There was, uh, somebody replaced a fencing there, a wooden fence. And I thought it was like a three foot fence and now it's a six foot fence right next to the, the pedestrian walkway there. Is that, you know, I thought there were views from that pedestrian walkway and now there aren't. Is there?
It, it, it across from the golf course?
No, it's not that, down that far. It's, um, it's about where the, the old beacon's dock, you know, the beacon's fuel dock was. Little bit, little bit past there. It's about the two hundred block, I think is what it is. And there was a, I think there was a three foot high fence and they just came, I think they came back in with a, like a six foot, six foot wooden fence across that hole, about three hundred feet of it. I thought that was, uh,
I'll have to go look at it.
I thought that was a listed view corridor, but.
I'll, I'd have to go look at it.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, I'll take a note to go look at it, so I'll go check it out.
All right, so moving on, uh, C seven, anymore?
On, on four sixty one, down at the bottom on the infrastructure utility requirements, they talk about an in lieu fee for undergrounding utilities if you don't do it.
I circled that too.
So that, is that real? That's great if it's in there. I like that.
So, I mean, this is, I mean, I think this come from, came from some of the conversations that you guys have had in the past. I mean, we, we do, we do occasionally listen to what you tell us. And, uh, and, and I think I mentioned that, um, we had an, uh, undergrounding in lieu fee when I was in, when I was at Pismo. Um, and so it, we started using it. We used it for about, gosh, I, I was there for fifteen years. I think we put it in place, probably about the middle of my tenure, then maybe eight years in or whatever. And so, um, it worked and we were able to generate enough money to, when we had some undergrounding projects happening, to kind of piggyback on top of those from some of the projects there, the underground lines up in the downtown area and stuff. Um, and I think we did a little bit up in the heights a little bit as well, so it, it proved to be fruitful. So it's something certainly the city can do.
Is there, has any community really solved the problem of how to, you know, because that's how to underground in residential areas and also, you know, how do you actually get some of these lines underground?
Because we've got, you have to do, you have to form a district. Um, I think I might have mentioned this to you as well.
Yeah, well, we've talked, we've talked about this several times, but the problem, problem is that the coordination and the engineering and everything turns into, you know, more than a, you know, a block by block seems to be able, capable of doing.
The, the issue becomes expense. Um, we had, uh, I'm going to refer back when I was in Pismo before, uh, you know, previously. Um, the Pismo Heights area, you know, there was a bunch of folks that were interested in this because there were, you know, spider webbed lines all over the place up there. Um, and, um, obviously panoramic views up there. Um, and so they petitioned the council to, uh, in undergo, undertake a study to see what it would take to underground and form an underground district. So the city council said, okay, we'll go spend twenty thousand dollars and go do that for you. So they went and did it and they said, okay, it's going to cost fifteen thousand dollars a lot to do this. And when they brought the study back to, back to city council, one guy showed up. The council was livid.
Yeah.
They spent twenty five thousand dollars on this and they didn't really want it. They wanted, I don't know, I guess the city to pay for it. I don't know what the idea was then, but.
I was gonna say, object basis move into town and do it. Object basis move into town and do it for us or?
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't know. It was, it's tough. I mean, so the only point behind that story I just gave you was you really have to have a solid group of folks that are interested in it, good consensus and an understanding that it's going to cost money.
Right.
And while it can be, you know, leaned against your property over time and when you sell, then you, you know, you pay for it or whatever, that's one of the ways to do it. People weren't interested.
Yeah, yeah, it's, that's conundrum. But it also, you know, the other thing too is it raises your property value twenty thousand. So.
Undoubtedly it does. Um, the, the idea of the cost was what killed that project.
Right, right. And I've, I've seen that, I've seen that here also where, where, you know, uh, one or two blocks have gotten together to try to, to do the engineering, they, they come up with the costs and then the people on the other side of the, you know, or somebody doesn't, doesn't want to pay their fair share and so it all falls apart. So. Okay, so moving on, we got four sixty one. Four sixty two.
Four sixty two on, on the nine, nine point twelve. Um, I'm, I'm not, never sure how to, how to interpret that. Um, because the, the space between houses is not public, right? That's private. So side yards are not public in terms of view sheds. We say we can't build there, but we can plant there, right?
Right.
So that's not a, that's not an issue. But I, I, that, that's one of those, that's one of those things that when we talk about views and vistas, some of the, some of the things that are in there, um, concern me in that we get the landscaping that's bigger than the, the scale of the house we're allowed to build on the lot. And I can understand the legacy trees that we have, but that's why I like that tree banking down below because we have parts of town, we could probably tree bank some really large trees and help build up some of that area, but, uh.
Now, see, I, I have the opposite problem with this, um, Michael, because to me, I would rather see the trees go into the neighborhoods for, for cooling, for privacy, for, you know, getting that clean air and protecting the lands, protecting the views and saying, well, don't plant something that's going to be a tall tree. That bugs me. I feel like we need to be planting the tall trees again. Um, so.
Well, but it's the hedges that, you know, take the place of a fence and get to be fourteen feet tall on Pacific and things like that. So anyway.
Oh, yeah, I remember that.
Okay, so. Now we've heard all the viewpoints.
We'll just move on because we're all tired.
Okay, so, so we're four sixty four, four sixty five, so we're into the open space. So, four sixty six, four sixty seven.
In, in the open space, the one thing I was concerned about, and I haven't followed closely enough, maybe some of you others have. I think on occasion, and it may be on, on four seventy five, they show the, the community center space. And I wasn't sure if, are we counting the, the, the Morro Bay Elementary School, wherever the original Moro, whatever the one in the center of town is? Are we counting that park or the, or the sports fields there as open space at all?
Counting this, those fields.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause I think the blue on the community center on that one on four seventy four is in the wrong place then. Community center really should slide down there here.
It kind of encompasses the parking lot. And below on the, to the sort of northwest side of that is shopping center area. But then where it says community center, the words is kind of covering the Morro Elementary property, the school property.
That's correct.
So we didn't consider that a private open space that was contributing to the?
No, we didn't, we didn't put it in here for you. Any of those things because it was likely that they were going to do something with it, which is,
Okay.
which they are.
That, that's what I ultimately was going to get to is we are counting something that we know is going to be gone in the.
We are not, and we did that purposely because they'd been talking to us for a while about doing something. It just takes them a while to get moving.
Are you pretty assured of having Lila Kaiser area indefinitely? Or is that, could that be up for grabs if?
Well, I mean, I, I mean, I think it's fair because it, it, it's in use right now. We do lease it. Um, and, uh, anybody that wants to do anything with the power plant, uh, site, um, in the future, I don't imagine that's going to go over really well if we don't get to keep that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
They do have to get permits from it after all.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't imagine that would go over very well or anybody would try to really push that too hard.
Yeah, I can see somebody trying to tell these kids that they can't play, they can't play baseball.
Yeah, I, I just, that, that seems unlikely in, in many respects, so.
Okay, so, uh, four seventy seven. Four seventy eight. Four seventy nine.
Is this the place where we start to talk about the, and maybe in a different place, maybe it's the circulation element, I'm not sure, but when we talk about things like the maintenance or replacement of the stair that's missing down at the end of, is that Surf Street where the stair came down? Is that something where we, we should have something in here as a policy or something to maintain the, the, the corridors for access from the bluff or whatever we want to call it? I, I'm just trying to find someplace that, I think somebody mentioned at a previous meeting that this should be part of our goals is to replace those things and not just let them hang there, fallow. I mean.
Yeah, I, I mean, we're probably at some point going to have to do something with it. Uh, we, we, we took it down and didn't issue ourselves the coastal development permit, so. I take is we have a violation at coastal that they're not enforcing at the moment. Based on conversations with them.
Do we need, do we need to say something to remind ourselves that we should maintain those things if they come down, but?
Yeah, I mean, I think they're, I'm just kind of looking through the, what the wording that's in here right now to see if it's really covered by something because there's some fairly broad generalized policy by good.
Almost, you know, policy OS one dash thirteen.
Yeah.
You know, the right to access almost seems like that might, you know, encompass it. Okay, so four, so that was four eighty one, forty two, forty three, forty four, forty five, natural open space. Forty six, forty seven, forty eight. Forty-eight. So on policy OS six-point-three, where we have coastal hazards, hazard strategies, ensure the parks and recreation areas and facilities are safe from coastal hazards, including through retreat, hard and soft protections, that, um, do we, should we have the hard protections in there? Or is that just an option that's?
I think you might want to leave it as an option, given that there may be things like in the Embarcadero area where they'd have to continue with revatements there.
And it also talks about, you know, it, it, it kind of covers both things, right? It says, hey, you, you, these are, you might, these are things you might want to protect, and there's ways to protect them, and then there's, it also talks about, well, and you also want to look at whether you need to relocate them or not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Specifically identify options to relocate portions of parks and open spaces susceptible to sea level rise impacts, and seeking funding to implement the identified adaptation strategy. So, I mean, I think it's, the policy includes a lot, I, I guess, I would say, because it talks about, you know, one at the one end, yeah, you might be able to do some of these things, and then on the other, it's like, well, at some point, you really need to move them, I guess it's kind of both.
Is that the one where they combined three policies from the, or other draft?
Yeah, who's so?
Yeah, it just seemed like we're kind of, we're almost green-lighting the, the hard protection in there, along with all the other, you know, equally with the other.
I, I think it's, I think it's just, I, I think it's a case-by-case basis, it sort of depends on what it is.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, a lot of this stuff, you know, I think as Susan was saying, could be in the harbor, so.
Okay, just, I just wanted to bring it up, see if there was, okay, so four eighty-nine.
Yeah, I don't know if, if this is something that, since it says policy's not included in local coastal program, but they're, they are talking about the sphere of influence and things like that, is that, should we, it, it says place value on agriculture, but should we have something in there that says, work with our external stakeholders and government bodies on, on the watershed? That's a, a forty-one corridor, you know, that, that's where that kind of thing would come in, you know, it seems like the, we get the, we get the downhill impact of all the things that are happening, and that's just a heads up to tell people to pay attention to the, working with the agencies that are upstream.
So, you're suggesting adding a policy into this section?
Maybe, or place value on agriculture and watershed, you, you could, if, if creating a new policy is more of a problem for like things at Coastal Commission or something like that, could we expand the agriculture one into the watershed?
That sentence totally doesn't make sense anyway, though. Continue to protect high-quality agricultural areas within the city planning, cities planning area, but outside the city limits.
We, yeah, Jesse, we have a planning area that's identified on our maps, and it goes way outside city limits and well into the county, I mean, most.
No, I get that, but I'm just saying that the wording, maybe, maybe it's me, maybe it's late, but.
So this is reflective of, this is like reflective of a city value, like, we value the agricultural lands around us, and we want to see them protected, and the reason we put, we have a planning area and we have policies that reference it is because we care about those areas, and, and there's a second piece to it, anything in our planning area, the county's required to send us notification when something's proposed out there, like for development.
No, I get it, I, I thought there was a, I think maybe there's a comma that could be there that he could.
An Oxford comma, yeah.
It, it, it could be, it could be, it's late and I'm tired.
Okay. I, I thought you were meaning something else.
No, no, I'm sorry.
Thinking of that, I think we're going to wrap it up here, if that's okay with you guys. Let's go ahead, and we've got.
We're arguing over commas.
I'm getting blurry-eyed, and the quality of discourse has dropped drastically here, so.
Well, the good is we made it into public safety.
Yeah, and we're getting it into public safety, so, okay, so we'll continue this item, do we, do we need to make a motion on this for?
Yeah, why don't we officially continue it to your next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting on ten seventeen? November seventeen, sorry, November seventeen.
Somebody want to make that motion?
No moves.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion? None, none? Cindy, you want to call for the vote on that?
Sure thing, Commissioner Barone.
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Ngrapia.
Aye.
Chairperson Loer.
Yes. All right.
Motion passes to adjourned to November seventeenth, five zero.
Okay, so, item number C is new business, we have none, E is unfinished business, we have none, so item on E is planning commissioners' comments and future agenda items.
To make a quick comment, just to congratulate everybody in the community on voting, I think we had a huge voter turnout, and all of our candidates who I think ran very respectful races, I think we, we have our results in, I'm not sure they've been certified as official, but again, congratulations to everybody who, who got out there and voted, and got out there and ran for office, because it's a challenging thing, and I think we all appreciate it.
Yep, one comment, so my term is up in the end of this year, I want to say January, maybe it's December thirty-first, I do intend to reapply, so just, I don't know what the outcome of that will be, but I will be reapplying, just.
Great.
Appreciate that, Jesse, thanks.
Oh, excuse me, everybody, okay, any other, any further comments? Okay, great, great, so, Scott, do you have anything you wish to say?
Well, thanks, I think I talked enough tonight.
So, at this point, we're, the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting on November seventeenth, twenty twenty, at six PM, via, via our favorite technological appliances here, so, thank you, guys.
Not at all.
Aye.
All right, right, thankfully.